Go ahead and call our meeting to order. Join me in a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Terry, can you roll call please?
John Mastin?
Here.
Ellen Ward?
Here.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
Some of.
Sessions.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to turn it over now to Mrs. Sayer. Very good. We have the agenda for our meeting next week. At the recognition of visitor sections, we have two presentations. The first will be the Parent and Community Engagement Committee. Presentation of annual goals. I understand that we sent you with your separate cover. And then Mr. Gardner and Ms. Olson will be doing an update on the Master Teacher Grant and the M T three. Do you want to ask any questions about that?
I'll wait till we get to that part.
Okay. On the consent agenda, we do have our minutes for the November 21st, 2017, regular session, the special session from November 2nd, and the work session from November 2nd and November 14th. Item 4.1.3 is the personnel request.
Are we needing to pull any of that out?
At this time, I am not aware of anybody. He was especially.
There was something put on my desk that looked like it was the start of a request. Clear the exception. When I came in.
Oh, that is, I'm sorry, thank you for bringing it up. The actual letter that was provided had to be added to the agenda because the. Do you want to go ahead, Denise?
Originally, the letter of resignation was stating that it was based on whether or not the waiver would be accepted. And she amended her letter and corrected that she was in fact resigning either way. That's what that was.
It seems to indicate though that she is, at least in the start of the thought process, of appealing to the board.
And she, there is in the personnel consent paperwork, her request of her exception to policy.
Okay, so are we going to do an executive session based on that? Or is there something else that she's going to be doing?
All I have received is the explanation she has provided. She's not asked to speak to the board.
Okay.
So item 4.1.4 are our Gibson additions. 4.1.5, our travel request. And this time we have requests for the National Honor Society for two trips that are coming. The first one is for Chicago in February, and then, which is actually a National Honor Society event. And then the second one is for students who attend an event in Anaheim, which is the Disney vacation. 4.1.6 is the site and district emergency response plans. Any questions on that?
I haven't got to look at it. Where exactly is it? In your office? Oh, it's right there.
It is kept in my, I keep hard copies in my office. And we do also have electronic copies available as far as for people to access that have access to that.
Oh, I would like to have access to that. Am I one of those people?
Really, no. You can come in and review, but because of the nature, they don't want those going out. We do provide a copy to the fire department for their citywide emergency plan response to that. It's kept in their V O C center, Emergency Operations Center. But we have to careful to.
Right.
The information, and that has to do with the security. If you'd like me to come and look at it.
Okay.
I can share the state template, so you, which is public information that we use to understand the protocol and what we'll do, but the specific information in there.
Okay.
Would you like me to send that to you?
I would. That would be nice. That would give. Be easier to come in and look for what I want to look at in the book if I.
Can you solve the template? And that is the consent agenda. And the old business, we do have the second presentation of the policy on the use of technology resources in instruction. And this one is brought back with the minor changes that were made in the language in the first paragraph. And then the additions that were on page 44. There's been no changes there. Item 6.1 is the approval in the new business section of the Parent and Community Engagement Plan. And I did want to share that Mrs. Walter will not be here at the meeting next week. She's going on vacation. And so if you have questions, it would be helpful. You could ask them today.
That was really smart, going on vacation.
My sister booked it.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'm just going to ask a couple because I'm going to get some more clarification afterwards. But one of my major questions is, beyond it being mandatory, I see in the rationale, it's mandatory yearly compliance. What else is this particular plan being used to for?
It is aligned with the new, when we talk about our district improvement plan that we go through, it's aligned to that. And I know Brett and Diana could probably speak more to the new system than we do going through that piece because the state is working really hard to align all of our plans, like our early childhood quality improvement plan is part of this district improvement plan that's driven by the Title I requirements. That's a yearly requirement that all the title schools have to go in. And of course, as a district, we align that whole entire process for all our schools. So we're being consistent on that piece. The parent engagement piece is part of that. The title requirements for that, as far as those pieces, like the compact, the other with the parent survey, is actually part of Arizona regulation that the principal has to, on a yearly basis, conduct a parent survey to get input from that piece. So that's aligned to that requirement, which is separate from the Title L. It's a state requirement.
Okay.
And as a district, it's part of our policies and procedures to have our parents be actively engaged and the community engaged. And so doing that from a district approach is what our boards have always wanted to be, trying to be consistent, so that we're working as a district to leverage resources. And then again, ensure that all the schools are addressing those activities that we identified to be very effective for that process.
And who's responsible for writing the purpose of the plan that I see under each school?
That, the generic template piece coming into that, each school goes through. The beginning part of this plan is something that the title, working with Michelle Youssef and also the district committee, looking at that's kind of a generic statement that's been for the purpose of the parent involvement plan.
It says, "The purpose of the plan, the planning process in Parent and Community Engagement Plan is designed to help facilitate systemic change in the entire educational program." I play Kavisi on slide number one. That doesn't seem generic to me. That seems huge to me. And I just wondered where that came from. It's the same for every school. So it may be generic, but, so that came from the state?
No.
Oh.
The purpose of the parent plan, working with Michelle Youssef and looking and aligning it to the requirements of the title piece, she's given guidance on that piece and process. And again, working through that largely tied to that district improvement plan process for Title I, to ensure that our plan and our purpose is communicated. The state does dictate things that we have to look at why we do what we do, you know, the purpose of parent engagement and involvement specifically, and aligning that.
One of the questions, actually, as we're redoing the process, do we know, Eddie, have you had the conversation yet? Are we going to, one of the, when we look at what were the areas that we had to look at in the C N A, are we going to be able to perhaps embed this in our integrated action plan so we don't have to have a separate plan in the future?
That is exactly where we're working toward. In fact, our parent survey this year looked at the parent piece to get that because we were concerned about how many community stakeholders were actually getting feedback. So we did look at the questions and they aligned that so that we're not doing three different things, that it's aligned, so you're going to get that distributed to each of the schools, all the parent voice is being heard or has the opportunity to be heard specifically to those questions that we're supposed to through that C N A, that comprehensive needs assessment. So they did align that for that purpose, so that this is a way to get that information, that data for the C N A. And then the goals that they're working on based on the C N A, the comprehensive need assessment that each school identified, the goals that they worked on to put in that plan were supposed to be the same in here. So that's not creating new, but just putting it all together to the specific activities that they're working on and documenting what they are doing.
But we haven't done that yet.
We are halfway there.
But that's not reflective in what's here. What a C N A, the critical needs assessment is not already incorporated into this plan, this 1718 plan.
The goals that.
The goals are, when they did their C N A, before the parent survey was done after. So we're still in the process for this year. And so it will drive that part of the C N A next year. So they'll be able to take the parent survey results from this year to help get that information for their C N A for next year. They did have the meetings at the beginning of this year, but based on the C N A that they did do this year, the goals that came into the area of parent involvement, their goals are supposed to be aligned and documented in here. So it's not two separate things of what they're working on. But they are also, again, the C N A is a couple pieces. There's more than what they do. There's a whole lot that they do. And this really documents more of all the different activities that they're doing, kind of going through. The C N A identifies the areas of weakness or lower areas that they do need to improve. But again, there are areas of strength. And some of those areas aren't identified so much on the C N A as goals because they're maintaining what they're doing. So they want to continue those best practices. Their goals really are more on the areas where they were lower and when they want to improve. And those are within this plan. But they're also continuing to document the things that they're doing that are working very well, that are strengths for them, that were identified on their C N A as well. And the parent involvement plan has, is in the comprehensive, she did have to upload that to that process. So this is embedded in there. As far as each school's plan is in that process.
So it's part of their integrated action plan?
Correct.
We have this statistics.
Michelle had to look all the parent plans, I think by the end of, I think last week.
We maintain the statistics on parental involvement, correct? By school. But we can tell what our response rate is on these surveys by school.
The survey data, yes. We do collect that data and we do maintain that. And actually, that's a PowerPoint I put together and give you the information. That information is communicated by elementary level. And we have the data by school that comes together for that piece. The responses to the question and the response rate overall as to how many surveys they do get. So that's put together in one PowerPoint presentation annually.
Okay, once we've got those statistics, do we have a policy in place to address the participation and to increase participation the following year? Or do we just take the statistics and say that's it?
I hope not, because one of the things we do as far as the parent and community engagement plan, we share out the district results. And they do go back, and that's part of that sharing out with stakeholders at their building level. They're supposed to go back to their school leadership teams and also sharing out at their P T S Os and things like that, the results of that, their site council. And that's part of that process of sharing the information. They're supposed to come back, and we do come back annually and talk about that, you know, what were the new things that they saw in the survey? What were the ahahs? Or what are the areas do we see, are they district wide? You know, so if there's things that we can approach from a district perspective versus a site perspective. Our parking lots are always a yearly issue, regardless of the site. But they get that kind of information as far as concerns and things like that. But they do use that on an annual basis to help kind of drive that process. Where we're kind of morphing is really the C N A, you know, looking at that. And that's where we're excited this year. And we're working on the alignment so that we can get a better global parent input piece by using that parent survey for the C N A. And then they still need to do the surveys for their staff and the other organizations that they kind of come through or community pieces. But that hopefully will give even more information. It will be interesting once they get those results because each site has a timeline they have to do that. February is when we generally get to collect the data. And being able to compare what their C N A initially for the year was versus that survey, they kind of see that when they have now a wider group that their parents are reporting in.
Something worries me, I'm just going to throw it out there for you to keep in your mind. When I worked for the Center for Business and Economic Research, we had to be very careful that we weren't skimming the population. And you've got parents out here that'll be involved in anything you want them involved in. But it's possible that we're skimming the population. And there are an awful lot of people out there that we have no idea how they feel about the school system. And I just bring that up because once we've got the statistics, we need a plan on how are we going to go ahead and address what we just got? How are we going to go ahead and get more people involved? I'm just throwing that out there for you to think about.
That's kind of the same concern that I have. When I read through this, I noticed one glaring thing, and that's when it comes to parents that are actually involved in this process. It's one, maybe two per school, and two would be the outlier that are actually listed as participating individuals. If we're going to develop parental participation in improving our schools, shouldn't we have more than one or two parents involved as a main individual in that process?
Yes. The process of parent participation, looking at that from a committee perspective, the meetings are always open to come in and attend and be part of that process. Each site asks to have at least two minimum representatives to attend those meetings on a regular basis and be involved. But they also are to be inclusive of their site council. You know, again, going back, at least we're trying not to be redundant or have, you know, three different committees. We really worked hard to minimize them. Before, we had a separate committee here and a separate committee there, trying to look at that, that they are using their site council for that voice. And then going back from the district committee back to their site council and their school improvement teams that they have and making sure that they're working together and getting their input in that process. Because it's not just, we're coming to the meeting and drafting, they go back to their sites. They work through those channels and kind of getting that input piece.
Now, you say that there are actual meetings. And on these meetings, when you have, are there minutes produced on those meetings?
I'll have to double check with Sarah. In the past, I know we do have an agenda. And I know there's some short notes and look on that piece because I know we have to document those that attend that meeting. So there's documentation. The minutes are pretty brief. The agenda is usually much more in depth. And there's the notes from that piece to kind of go through.
And I guess where my concern is, is getting back again, you know, when I see the word site council on there, how many people do we actually have in attendance at one of these meetings at a school? And is it a representative sampling, for lack of a better thought process, of two or three or four parents that would encompass grade levels within that site council listing? And if it is, perhaps we should break down who on that site council actually is attending within our documentation. That may, just in my mind, be a better thought process so that we have a better idea that we are being inclusive, that we are reaching out, that we don't just have this as a staff-heavy exercise. I'd really like to see us at a point where we're collaboratively working with our community and our parents.
And I think the new process, when we talk about our integrated action plan, is that. Because I think some of you may have attended some of the meetings that were held this year. And this year was very much a transition year, coming in, time-wise, having to kind of get it going. But I think as we're kind of going through, which is what our intention of the survey was, to look at this process, will help drive the next year and having better data, more important. Representatives globally, not just the site meeting people that did attend, but you have a bigger voice being heard. But that is very much that. Those meetings are held, they're communicated. And I know some of the meetings were pretty well-attended and some of them were smaller. I mean, they were put out there at peace. But we can definitely take this back to our administrative team and talk about that piece and then kind of reflect on that because it was a year of transition and starting this whole piece.
This was the first year that we actually implemented site-based councils. I think one of the things, and I've written myself a couple of notes, because if we have a new process, which includes the comprehensive needs analysis, the integrated action plan. And my understanding is, so the integrated action plan this year was the Title I plan and also the, was it the Move On When Reading this year?
Was integrated.
Yeah, was integrated. And next year, the whole C T E plan will be integrated in it. And so my question, I wrote for myself, is when will we be able to just integrate the PACE plan into the integrated action plan? As opposed to having uploading separate documents where we would just copy and paste the goals? As a part of that, my guess would be that we will revise this process. But as you're talking, Mr. Mastin, about that, one of the areas that seems to be important would be as we're going through the year, one of the things that all of the principals have talked about is each, we did this whole needs analysis. So now we're going to get together and we're going to have a site-based council meeting. So one of the things that we want to do is look at meaningful data. One of those pieces of meaningful data would include, what does our parent participation look like so far to date? Why is it, you know, why are events not being well-attended? Or whatever it happens to be. But that should become an agenda item on site council with data being looked at essentially quarterly. So that by the time they get to revising their action plan, they have historical data and perspective that then can be built into the next plan. So it should become more of a process and systemic. I would expect to see it on the site council agendas.
As long as we can do that and then actually use it to start improving some of the perceptions.
And the concern, and I think that we've talked about that, is having the separate plan. That's just the plan. When we're also doing the school site plan and then we're also doing an emergency plan and we're also doing the, you know, all these different.
It seems like all of the plans are really check-the-box kind of mandates. Not that there aren't certain things within each of them that are very important, but it seems like there's a lot of time and effort into creating all these committees that meet. And when really, the bottom line from what I hear from people from the different schools is there is very low parent participation. So we're trying to get more parents to participate, but we're coming up with a lot of these maybe really dry ways to participate. I don't know if that's the case. But when I read through this plan, the purpose of it is supposed to be to improve achievement, improve achievement. But when I look at the monitoring of the plan, there's nothing about how we're monitoring achievement. It's about, I don't know, let me, I mean, I can read it, but none of it seems to have to do with monitoring actual achievement of our kids. Let me give you an idea. So monitoring the plan, surveys, sign-in sheet, volunteer list, parking lot safety. None of that has to do with academic achievement is my point. So if we're supposed to increase academic achievement, how are we measuring that? Because it's not listed in the plan. So I guess I'm just confused. I didn't know if I was reading it properly or not. But I can meet with you to get more clear on what I'm missing. But I do have red lines throughout the whole document. We could spend the next couple hours here. Are you guys game? Pat?
I'm in. That's mine.
I'm not game.
I've got one thing I'd like to add to this philosophically. I'll throw it out there like I do a lot of things. If you want, participation. You have to ask for participation. And I'm going to use some history here. I took over a lodge that only had six people a month sitting in the lodge. When I left, we had over 120 every meeting. Because I asked people. I called them and I said, would you come? We need your help. It's the same way with this. You know, when we get that statistics in and we see what the parental participation is, then it becomes time for somebody to pick up the phone and say, "Mrs. Johnson, we really need you here because we haven't had any participation and we need some parents to help us out." And we talked about communication when we were running for this office. And the big key is, there's a difference between information and communication. Simply telling parents that you're going to have a meeting will not get them to the meeting. That's just information. When you communicate to the parents and say, "We need your input. Would you mind coming for the next meeting?" You'll get much more participation. I just wanted to throw it out there. I think we often get confused between information and communication. There is a big difference. You can publish all the things you want to, put all the things online you want to, do all the plans you want to. That's information. It's not until you actually approach the people that you get communication. And so I just throw it out there to think about.
I believe there is power in a formal invite. There, it does make a difference. When you formally invite someone face-to-face and/or via phone, there is power there. Your likelihood of bringing them to the table is much greater.
A lot of members in my lodge tell me, say, "I don't have confidence." And two weeks later calling me up and saying, "You know, hell, I didn't have time for that. But is there anything else I could do for you?" You know? And you'd be amazed how many more people become involved. That's all. Food works too. Yeah, food works.
We haven't realized that.
Fried chicken in New Zealand.
We do have food.
It's like opening a house with pizza.
The largest P T A meeting when we have food.
And then I just wanted to clarify, are the standards that we're using, are those P T A standards? I mean, I don't have any other question. Pat, do you have any questions?
No, but you know, in the time that I was in the schools, I find out that the individual schools do make an effort to really involve the parent. So it isn't a matter that the school operates all by itself or is afraid to get parents there. A lot of times, it depends upon the issue or whatever. And, but I found out that you reach out and people are willing to do that. And so, you know, as I sit in these meetings, it's like a committee. I found out that the bigger the committee got, the less effective it was. And what you do is you go ahead and you bring in people that are the people that can get the job done. You formulate the thing, but you involve a lot of people in those activities.[1767.34] And so I've never been big on this idea that we have to be, it's great to be all-inclusive. But the fact of the matter is, people have different interests or whatever. Like at the high school, if it involved athletics, man, you're going to have a lot of interest and you're going to get a lot of people up there. If it involved the band, it would be another thing. If it's a chemistry class or whatever, it may not be that number. But I have found out over the years that the administrators work hard to get a very balanced view and a lot of input from parents. And that's the only thing that I want to say about.
Sorry, I'm going to write myself a note. The first item under new business is a submission of course approval and cost fees for the 18-19 school year. And Mr. Becker will be present at that meeting to discuss some of the changes that were recommended here as well.
Is that 6.2?
That is 6.2.
Yeah, I'm glad to see some of those fees going down a little bit on those classes, yeah.
It's nice to see fees going down.
Yes, it is.
He's not here, but does anybody know why we're replacing physical science 1 and 2 with conceptual chemistry?
That's what he's going to talk in one of his.
I asked, I am, to have him give us a good presentation. Because I have some serious questions about this and I want to get it cleared up.
Okay. All right.
Is there, physical science, is that considered, if you take that, is that considered for a college credit or anything like that? It isn't? Okay.
The only ones that count are absences.
Okay.
I think that was my understanding of why there's a change, is because of either college recommendation or something to go along, after talking to one of the science teachers up there. So it has to do with correlating with either college. I think it has to do with maybe correlating with college requirements or something to that fact.
Neither of them are going to meet the college requirements, so I don't know what else.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'll mention what my question is on, just so you all know. You know, I question why we're replacing physical science with conceptual chemistry when none of us in this room used any of our chemistry that we took in high school and college for our whole life. So is there a purpose for conceptual chemistry? I mean, is there something it serves that physical science doesn't? Physical science has always been a traditional course in high school curriculum. And are we replacing it with something that's going to serve us better? Or are we simply replacing it with something that is more fashionable? I really question. And I had the same question with integrated science. You know, is there a purpose behind what we're doing or are we simply doing it because it's fashionable? Or because it serves, let's say, the top 10 or 20% of our kids who are going to take chemistry? You know, is there something there that we're doing that isn't necessarily better for the overall student population? And I'm sure he'll explain it to us.
I will convey the question, absolutely. And he is aware that there was more to come. A deeper presentation of information.
Yeah, there may be a very valid reason. I'm just saying, I want to know what the reason is.
Item 6.3 is approval of contract for speech services with therapy. And this one, we actually have a speech therapist who vacated her position this year, and so we are requesting approval to contract with the vendor for speech teletherapy services so that we can use these services throughout the year this year. So Walter is here tonight. Do you have any questions on that?
I'm just curious. We've had such an issue. Are we able to employ technology? And do they have anything like teletherapy, where you can do speech therapy online so that we could avoid this issue? I don't know. I know there's telemedicine, but I don't know if that works for speech therapists or...
Well, actually, this is using the computer.
It is? Oh, okay.
That's what this is.
Okay. I thought this was the service that we used over and over again.
Yes.
We have a contract with one provider, and they're actually going to be able to provide us a therapist who do teletherapy.
Online. Okay. So how will that work at different schools?
Well, the two sites that we're specifically looking at, Jamaica and Orangue, are the two sites where the therapist that was with us vacated. We do have a staff that is finishing up her practicum for SLPA, Speech Language Biology Assistance. So she'll be working in person with the kids on-site to do that supervision. And then it is a computer, we set up a schedule, and she logs in with the students, and she's there to help facilitate. So there is requirement of a person to be with the students.
Okay.
We've used this once before.
We have used it for speech in the past. We have.
As I recall, it was fairly successful.
It was. Overall, the students seemed to be very engaged, and, you know, we were kind of hesitant for a couple of years to really go down that road. We didn't have to, but when we, it was necessitated. But overall, the students seemed to find it really engaging. The staff that worked with it also found it to be, you know, unique, and they learned and expanded their skills as well. And I think everybody on our end had to expand their skills, because it was something new with paperwork process and communicating. So it was a good learning opportunity for everyone, actually. And we have also used it for OT in the past as well, and we couldn't find a person to do OT in person.
Item 6.4 is our vouchers and student activity funds. Any questions for Mr. Murray?
No, I don't. I haven't, I haven't actually read as far into the packet yet, actually. I got stuck on the 80 pages of the PACE program.
We'll have to make sure I put that at the end of the agenda next time.
I have a couple of things, not that important, Mike, but when you get a chance, would you go over these? Anytime I see line items, there's zero out all the way across. I immediately have an antenna go up. And the reason I have an antenna go up is, is this line item serving a continual purpose or is its item a pocket which we can later shove money into? If you understand what I'm saying? And I'm just wondering, are these line items, I'll give you a couple of them, state tutoring and then we come on down, energy and water savings, deficiency correction fund, building renewal grant. No, that's okay, I got that one. But those, I'm just wondering, do we have, do we generally during the year have a balance in these? Because we don't here now. And is there a purpose for those existing?
Well, actually, let me address that, because just before, a few weeks ago, actually, I took this document and based on the previous meeting we had here, all of you requested that this be formatted a little different so that you can see, you can compare month to month and prior year. So that occurred. Normally, this document would be at least two pages. So what we also did to address what you just suggested, we did go through this fund by fund, and I eliminated probably, I would say, close to 50% of funds that were on here. So if you take last month's page and compare it to this month, it'll be about 50% fewer funds that are here for that exact same concern that you just had. So we went line by line. We found that many of the funds were no longer active funds, so they were deleted off of this sheet. The ones that are remaining have the potential to be used in the future. Just currently, there are no expenditures this year. The state tutoring, for example, that used to say Ames tutoring, and there is a possibility where there'll still be some money that will be allocated for that. It'll be a small amount, if any. So we kept it there in the short term, just so we wouldn't have to add it on there at a later date, should they produce funds for us to use in that area. But in the immediate, everything you see here is current or a fund that we do use from time to time. And if that changes, for example, building renewal grant, there used to be a 690 and a 691. There's actually a duplicate. Well, the USFR gets changed from time to time and updated. So now it's the 691 fund, so there was no need to have 690 on there anymore. The same happened, the same, there were actually two E-rate funds on there for a long time. And E-rate is now 374. So the other one that was on there has been removed. So we did that just several weeks ago in preparation for cleaning up this document at your request. And while we did that, and while we were cleaning it up template-wise and framework-wise, we did that audit and cleaned up everything else that didn't need to be on there.
The only one of the questions is deficiencies correction fund. The very name sounds an awful lot like someplace to stick money, so I just want to check with you.
I will look into that, but that fund has been used even in the last year, I believe. So I will check on that.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with what you're doing. I just, these light bells in my head when I look at them, you know?
Well, you can see that we're on the same, we're thinking the same thing as we were reformatting this, we want to clean it up. It is noticeably, well, when you compare it, it'll be noticeably different, because it is now on one page.
I think it's fantastic, because it allows me to look at it out of glance and ask questions like, 100 Title I ESEA. Current year, $35,000. Prior year, total $313,000. And it makes me wonder why we're so far.
Yeah, it's just a difference in expenditures. So that would be through, I'd have to talk to our Michelle and those who handle the Title I funds.
I mean, I know that there was like a, I think it was even in this book, a total 4% decrease in Title I.
It was a 6% decrease in Title I, and we just got our allocation. So even though we've been spending, it hasn't been necessarily attributed to Title I. And so those will occur. The other piece of that, in current year troubles, is only $20,000. So we are, is that right?
No.
$35,000. So we are paying, there are salaries that come out of Title I, so it should be a little bit larger, but they've been paid and will be adjusted to...
There'll be journal entries that are made to actually change it from one fund to the appropriate.
And we are being told, just as in the site, because we've had this discussion, is, you know, we have our plans and everything are due, but we don't know our allocations until, you know, late, until we finally actually get the allocation. And so Mrs. Douglas has corresponded to say that their goal is to ensure that by March or April, we will have our allocations, which will help us a great deal for planning. But we are anticipating that there will be an additional 6% decrease for next year as well. Anyways, thank you.
It's nice to look at it this way, in this format. Easy on the eyes.
Just out of curiosity, Mike, did you ever look into the possibility of outsourcing the shirts and gym suits?
I haven't, no. I mean, not more than what we've talked about before with...
Yeah, no big deal. I just didn't, I knew you'd mentioned...
You just read it in the minutes. Huh. That's why it's not in your mind. This is in the minutes, in the consent agenda. Because I'll have a chance to tell you.
And then that is actually all our action items. I think this is the shortest action agenda for items that we've had, I don't know why. Then we have our special services monthly update. And as you know, Mr. Gardner will be doing an update on the grants, which will be an actual presentation.
This is where I read the 4.9 decrease under grant updates.
That is from the...
For IDEA.
Yeah, that's for the special education. Yep. And we had a very large decrease in our Title II grant. And that's the one that we're predicting that Title II will actually go away within the next year or two. I think, was it almost 20%?
And what is Title II again?
That's professional development. We use that for our hard-to-fill stipends and a lot of our teachers who take classes or take tests and can be reimbursed so that they have an approved area. That comes out of that. So that's going to be tough. So those are areas that, if we want to continue to do those things, those will have an impact on, maybe some operating budget as well. And just as, what we haven't talked about it too much, is we've been working on our preparations for the Budget Committee, which I will indicate the dates for that. It's January 17th, is it? That's our budget first. January 17th. It will be over at the high school library. But one of the areas that we've been waiting on is our salary study. But even as we've been talking about that, one of the things that we're focusing on, and I just kind of want to share this as we've been talking about the budget, is that we want to look at how much we had estimated would be spent from the override into what we have as actuals, so that we can look at how much we might have to apply for the salary study. But one of the areas that we've talked about have been the speech and language services, those hard-to-fill positions that were mentioned earlier in the year, as addressing those. We're hoping to not have to continue to do so many of those external contracts for those kinds of services. And since it's a work session and not the regular meeting, I would like to mention that, well, we have to have at least an hour, right? That Mrs. Heronima is retiring. And so we have hired a replacement for her, and she is doing some time here at the office together. So that is something that will be different for them.
I'm glad that should happen sooner rather than later. That's good. That's a lot of knowledge to transfer over.
We're actually having to transition.
Right.
Wow.
And I did hear from Kathy. She was prepped, and the anesthesiologist knocked her out, and then the laser machine didn't work. So they sent her home. So she's at home gloopy right now. And they're going to try to do it on Saturday. That's too bad. That was too bad. And having to have an anesthesia again is not a good thing. That's not good. Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other updates or announcements, that's me.
My bad.
Well, I'm going to adjourn.
Well, you do yours and I'll do mine.
Do you have a motion? Well, we're having our next meeting. Our meeting is next Tuesday to December 19th. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So am I. Second.
Pat Murray? Alan Park? John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to make a motion. Oh, no, no, you have to be here.